Mark, you got a seat?
All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. It is now 10:00 a.m. We're here for the regular session of Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to our flags. Please stand.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the people that have showed up here in reference to taking care of their community business. We thank you for the gift of life. Let there be peace throughout the world, and in Christ's name we ask these things. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas is fair and honest. I pledge allegiance to the deep Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. We have Commissioner -- no, I can't even speak this morning. Commissioner Hutchins, Monroe, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you got the minutes from January 9th, 2024, regular session. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff. They may be placed on the future agenda or addressed by some other course of response. Mark White.
Well, good morning. Let me first apologize for missing our last two meetings. I was very, very sick.
Well, we're glad you're better.
Well, thank you. And because it's my first meeting back, I want to say Happy New Year to everybody, so it's good to see you guys. In honor of Martin Luther King holiday just a few days ago, I wanted to quote him. "As our lives begin to end, the day when we become silent about things that matter." Well, I'm not Martin Luther King, but I'm not going to stand by and see injustices happening around us and in the Merritt area and any of the residents of the surrounding area. So when Farmersville attempted to run over the residents of Merritt and push their city limits all the way to Celeste, we have -- we've made great strides. The ETJs, as you well know, have all been pulled out of Hunt County, even though Farmersville maps have not been updated at this point. I also have information that several people in the Collin County side of Farmersville ETJ have received approval as well. So there are a lot of people upset on both sides, Collin County and Hunt County. But I do want to give you an update on where we're at. I have the final map of Merritt city limits. We will begin obtaining petition signatures as early as this evening, and the survey should be done by the end of this week. So we are very, very close to providing the Commissioners' Court, and you in particular, Judge Stovall, with a formal petition package to call an election to see if Merritt is truly interested. We're confident because our polls show it's 80-plus percent of the residents want to be incorporated. I have also personally obtained data from both Hickory Creek and Caddo Basin SUDs and verified the residents within the city limits. We far exceed the 2,000 number. We're up closer to 2,100 people, so that's not going to be an issue. We validated addresses with the multipliers. We've got the final survey coming this week. We'll have the legal description. We'll have more than 50-plus signatures on our petition. So we expect that either later this week or early next week, I'll be submitting that entire incorporation package. So I also want to say, this has just been an amazing journey. I've never been involved in anything like this, and, boy, before you know it, you're just sucked right in because you're trying to do something good for the people that live around you, your neighbors, the people down the road. And I hope it's been a positive experience for you guys. I've really gotten to know you, and I really appreciate all that you do. And I hope you, too, feel the same as Martin Luther King, that you don't become silent when things really matter. And I've seen that, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dwayne Smith.
Morning.
Well, I'm through complaining about Encore's situation out on 1033. It's pretty evident that you're going to vote to allow Encore to continue with their building of the electric line so Mark's cousin and family can get the electricity. Even if you vote no, the damage is already done to our properties. They've cut the trees down. Encore has lied to us since day one on this, constantly changing their answer each time we address the issue. Being lied to as a voter is not a good thing. It happens, in my opinion, all the way to the President of the United States. We can't trust Encore when they gave us a vague easement and refused to be more specific after some requests for clarification. That's all we ask. More lies were told, our concerns were ignored. They said we denied them an easement. I personally took two Encore people on my Kubota out to the grass pasture on our land and put stakes in the ground 30 feet away from the trees. I really don't feel that falls into denying them anything. If anything, we feel they denied us a fair easement. In the end, some of the trees are removed. Again, not trimmed, they're ground level, which violates that state law, but I can't go give them a ticket. Can any of y'all? Probably not. As a reminder, we aren't even on Encore. We are on juice. We want this young man and his family to get electric service. We told them that in one of our meetings with Encore. And the other neighbors voiced the same sentiment to him. Hopefully, the rental break in a few days so that they can get the -- they won't tear up the road and the bar ditch when they're putting the poles and power line in. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Amy Smith.
As he said, we came in two weeks ago regarding Encore's activities on County Road 1033. It's on the agenda, and after the Texas State Utility Code law was violated, as Encore did not receive approval from the Commissioners' Court before proceeding with cutting the trees. It seems contradictory to us now that they seek approval to do something they've already done. This wouldn't have happened today if I hadn't raised this issue with Encore and the Commissioner. I'm not sure Encore and the county would have followed the law. I did file an informal complaint with the Public Utility Commission and am now required to file a formal complaint, since the informal complaint is just one step in the process, finding out bureaucracy at its best. That's going to cost us money, time, 10 copies of documentation, which we do have, potential trips to Austin to testify, et cetera. Even though we know the law was broken, the PUC wants to know what restitution we want. Honestly, the damage is already done. We're pretty sure you will vote to allow Encore to proceed after the law was broken. Even if you don't know, as Dwayne said, this doesn't change anything since the damage has already been done. We'd be having a way different conversation in the last two Commissioners if we'd just been told the truth from Encore and our County Commissioner. Mark, instead of just talking with Encore and your cousin, the landlord, requesting the service, a phone call to your four constituents affected by this way back in your first meeting with Encore last fall would have alleviated a lot of our concerns about the process. We could have also told you what we've done with Encore that day to come up with a fair easement. Apparently, you didn't hear all sides of the story. You should have also told us the truth about Encore and your cousin when we talked to you on January 5th. We gave you every opportunity. These steps would have gone a long way in rectifying this situation. But instead, we have a continuation of the six-and-a-half-month-long saga with Encore and now the county. You and Encore are both active, since there's no law broken. We have a high probability of issues for the rest of our life with Encore and future retaliation from them. We should all remember that the greatest threat to our democracy is integrity in our politicians from the very top level to our local government. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public testimony. It's no old business. Commissioners, under new business consent calendar, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item B, approval of accounts payable.
Make a motion, we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have no budget amendments, approval of payroll and personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll and personnel?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number one, the quarterly report at the Ody Murphy Cotton Museum. Susan?
Thank you for letting me present our quarterly report this morning. Over the past three months, visitors to the museum have come from 39 different states and the District of Columbia. Internationally, they've come from Scotland, New Zealand, Australia, Brazil, Switzerland, Mexico, the Netherlands, and Argentina. So we had a really good crowd there. There was a total of 899 paid visitors to the museum, and a total of 1,002 people actually signed our guestbook. Our visitors spent 90 nights in local hotels, which included Hampton Inn, Comfort Suites, Holiday Inn, Best Western Quality Inn, Motel 6, and Super 8. Some of our group tours came from the 5th grade at Celeste Elementary, senior group out of Fate, and adults from the travel industry. Some of our lunch break special speakers this quarter included Robert Hurst, who spoke about the Columbia Space Shuttle disaster and was amazing to listen to. If you never have, you definitely need to. In November, Jack Turnage talked about the Green Belt Project, and in December, Penny Pickle Crispin gave a presentation about her new book, A Shortage of Angels. We also had a World War II Roundtable program where Dr. Steve Tafe did a program on George Marshall's generals. In October, the museum had its Goofy Golf event, and we had over 80 people participate, and they had a wonderful time. We set up a 15-hole miniature golf course on the museum grounds and are looking forward to it again next year and continuing to grow that new event. In November, we had our Frontier Day event where the kids played games, learned archery, made butter, did crafts, and learned how to make rope. We also held the Cotton and Rural History Conference in October. For our movie nights, we showed Let's Go Navy, starring the Bowery Boys, and Springtime in the Sierra, starring Rory Rogers. We also installed a new temporary exhibit of Linda Weaver's collection of Christmas Santas, nutcrackers, and cross-stitch pieces. Thank you for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Commissioners?
I want to tell you one thing. We enjoyed the visit we had last week. We're proud, and I noticed you have some new stuff in there, and it's pretty cool. We appreciate it, and I believe everybody enjoyed it.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I think we'll do it again next year.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, I entertain a motion for approval of the report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item two, the Hunt County Delinquent Tax Collections Update from Purdue. Brandon Fielder, Collins &amp; Mott, LLP. Patrick?
Good morning, Judge Stovall. Good morning, Commissioners. Good to be with you all again this morning. I want to provide you an update on the delinquent tax collection for the county. There's a couple of things I want to go over. Number one, just kind of give you an update on the turnover, the 2022 taxes that were turned over to our law firm for collection starting July 1st of last year. Second thing is to review an overall update on the overall delinquent accounts. And then lastly, I want to provide a kind of an update on the resale project we've been working on. So if you would, turn to the first page. Here, I'm showing overall collections activity. Our firm is doing on behalf of the county. Since July of 2023, we've got over 2,200 phone contacts, almost 7,000 letters mailed, continually looking for better addresses, 556 address updates, constantly monitoring the bankruptcy court to watch the bankruptcies that are being filed, to protect the tax lien for the properties that are in Hunt County, to make sure that we're following and tracking those cases. We filed 67 lawsuits since July, and then we've got 20 active payment agreements, working with folks to get the taxes paid. So the next page shows the 2022 tax year turnover. There's a little over $1.5 million base tax that was turned over to our law firm for collection for that tax year, and we've collected, as of the end of December, almost 44% of that, which brings the overall tax collections for all the taxes, the delinquents and the, you know, the on-time payments, to about 98%. So obviously, we're going to keep working at that, but that's kind of where we are as of December 31st.
Are those just taxes for the previous year? Is that all delinquent taxes?
That is just the 2022 taxes. So that would be, you know, the 2022 year. Those go delinquent February 1st of 2023, and it doesn't get turned over to us for collections until July 1st of 2023. So we started collecting on that, and that's the status of those collections as of the end of December. The next page does show the overall delinquencies, you know, not just that year, but the prior years as well. I'm showing a breakdown there where we have, you know, 20 -- almost 20% of those taxes are in litigation. We have 34% that are in deferral. And again, a deferral, the taxes are due, but we can't foreclose the tax lien on those properties until the deferral comes off. So we, you know, we continue to monitor that. And then, you know, we have a number that are in different categories there, but -- and then the breakdown, showing the dollar breakdown, you still show, you know, it's less -- 89% of your accounts owe less than $1,000 of base taxes due. We continue to call, collect, send letters on those, but if we filed suits on those accounts, again, we'd be doubling down on the amount due, and we really try to work with these folks, and we take a top-down approach on collections, so.
Patrick, we got several people in the audience today.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain to them what the deferrals are?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So a deferral account is an account where a property owner has their property, their homestead property, they've elected as a homestead, and they are eligible under the tax code for, you know, it's either a deferral, and they're over 65, or maybe they're a disabled vet, or another disability as defined in the tax code. They can elect, they can go to the appraisal district and elect to have a deferral on the delinquent taxes that are due on their property. And so the taxes are still due, but the tax code doesn't allow the taxing units and the collectors, myself, to foreclose on the property, to sell the property to pay those taxes, until the deferral comes off. And so, you know, if the person passes away, and then, you know, after that point, the deferral comes off, and we can, you know, try to get payment on the account and foreclose if we need to. But that's essentially how that works.
If I may ask you this, I notice on the next page, it went from July the 23rd up to $1,300,000, down to October, hitting probably 1,225. On down to January of '24, did you all sell some of these properties? Is that what has done away with some of the deferral in reference to that?
No, sir. That is -- essentially, what happens is the deferral comes off the account, and so all I'm showing here is the tracking of the properties, the dollar amounts, and the number of deferrals that are shown by those months. And so if the -- when the deferral comes off, those numbers change. But it's not because we're foreclosing on a deferral account.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. And, you know, I just did want to provide you an update. I know, Commissioner Martin, you like to see how the deferrals are tracking, so you see that in the next slide. The last page I want to cover is an update on the resale that, you know, that we took on when we took -- started representing the county. You know, when we started representing you guys, there were 146 properties that were struck off to the county. They had been taken to a tax sale. They've just been sitting there, that, you know, nothing has been going on with them. So we took that on. It's something that the court requested us to do, and we've been continually taking those back to the sale, getting collection, collecting all those amounts, selling those properties. And now, we have 76 of 146 of those are back on the tax roll, which is the most important thing. We did, you know, in the course of this project, we've gotten over $53,000 of the taxes paid, which is good. And then we've had some excess proceeds on the property, so -- but the most important thing is just getting those properties back on the roll and out of the county's hands. So that's been a very good project. We're going to continue to, you know, push those to sale, and our next sale is in February, and we'll have a number more of those on that sale. So with that, I would open it up to any other additional questions you may have.
Anyone? Patrick, I'd like to thank you all for doing a great job, and I really appreciate you coming and giving us updates and getting some of these old properties off the rolls. That's been a headache for a long time, so I, for one, appreciate what you're doing. I'm glad to see that get done.
Well, thank you all, and I appreciate your all's confidence in me, and we'll continue to do hard work for you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you. Entertaining motion for approval?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item three, quarterly interpretation discussing current ag life events in educational programs.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody's face. Thank you for having us. Thank you for your continuous support. I hope you were able to see the table as you came in. That was presented to you all from our 4-H families that are here present and their children, so that's for your enjoyment, and we're grateful, again, for your continuous support. Oh, thank you. They trucked in the rain to do this. We all came in on skis today. I'm going to let our program assistant get started in just a second, but I wanted to make a quick plug for some upcoming FCH programs I've got going on for county employees. Everybody will be seeing these. Which one is it? You'll be seeing these in your boxes. I'm sure you already have. We're going to be doing an eight-week walking program to get everybody achieving their wellness goals for 2024, and it's going to be the Hunt County Employees, something I'm hosting just for us, against the Hunt Regional Hospital staff. And so get excited. February 4th is when we'll kick it off. I'll have a table in the bottom of the courthouse from now until then, off and on, if you have questions. The second program I wanted to plug was something I'm going to be doing, a luncheon learn every Thursday in February at the Extension Office about reducing food waste in the home. So again, flyers are in your box. You can email me if you have any questions. If you want to come hunt lunch with me, we'll have a sponsored lunch and learn about reducing food waste in your home. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kirsten, and she's going to give you a great update on all things Hunt County 4-H. Yes, sir.
Quick question.
Yes.
The public's invited to have that. We can't eat all that.
Absolutely. Please.
Everybody is here, please.
As you come in.
Help for taking that, because we can't -- I don't want to start to eat all of that. And another question, you're saying every Thursday, there's a meeting? We got a lot of elections coming up. Are you going to have an alternate place when we're voting?
This is after early election. This is every Thursday in February.
In February?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We got the primaries for March, where we have early vote in February.
Okay.
Need to get with Ginny and --
Make sure.
Yes.
We looked at the calendar together before I organized, but I will verify because
Double check, of course.
I know that's a constant
Yes.
revolution. All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good morning. As Mary stated, my name is Kirsten Polk, and I'm the 4-H Program Assistant. I'm just here to give you some updates and highlights on what's been going on in Hunt County 4-H in the past year or so. So in 2023, we had 15 Clover Kids. Clover Kids are 4-H members that are kindergarten through second grade, and we had 122 traditional members and 33 volunteers with a total of 296 volunteer hours. Hunt County 4-H in 2023 had five clubs, Caddo, Commerce, Greenville, Lone Oak, and Wagner. And in 2020, in the 2023-2024 year, we added Wolf City. And now, our enrollment is up to 17 Clover Kids, 139 traditional members, and 37 volunteers. The top five Hunt County 4-H projects are rabbits. That's due to them showing them at the Hunt County Fair. We have 34 youth enrolled. Shooting sports, that's archery, pistol, rifle. 28 youth enrolled. Photography, horse, and food nutrition have 21 youth participating in those projects. Ambassadorships. Currently, Hunt County 4-H has six ambassadors representing their chosen careers on the state level. Ambassadors are selected from an application process and participate in trainings led by Extension and Industry Leader Professionals, in which they learn how to educate others. We have Hope Fainer. She and Kason are ag career-ready ambassadors. That is a new thing that has been introduced by our District for Specialists. Equine ambassadors, we have Ava Frye and Ella and Avery Rocky. Livestock, we have Kason McAfee. And STEM, we have Ruby Stout. So those are actually our ambassadors in action. The first picture is Ms. Ava. Ava was at the Fort Worth Stock Show last weekend, and she is -- she's doing a simulation, and she's teaching that young lady actually how to ride a horse. That is -- the next picture shows Kason McAfee. Kason McAfee is at Caddo Mills High School, and she's talking about 4-H and 4-H clubs and how to get involved. And that is Ms. Ava again. Ava is at State Fair, teaching Livestock 101. And that is Ms. Hope. Hope is at Heart of Texas. So curriculum enrichment, curriculum enrichment falls under me. The 4-H program spans beyond club membership. Additional youth through the county are reached by providing hands-on experimental learning opportunities. Our Science of Ag Day, that's really our big hitter. 684 youth are impacted. It starts off with our -- it started off with our former ag agent, Sarah Allen. Sarah asked the children, how does agriculture impact your daily life? They couldn't really tell you at the beginning, and by the end, they were able to tell you how much agriculture impacted them every day. Walk Across Texas, that is the program that Mary just spoke about. It's just to encourage youth and adults to get moving, get active. 503 youth were impacted. And then Egg to Chick, last year, we were able to get it into Bland and Commerce Elementary, and 139 youth were impacted by those programs. Summer camps. This summer, Mary and I hosted four summer day camps. The topics were Intro to 4-H Projects, Intro to Livestock, and Intro to Clover Kids. We had a lot of fun. We took the kids to the Northeast Texas Farmers Co-op, and we showed them the different kind of feeds and the nutritional value in those. Mary hosted a trash-in show. That's what you see here. And here, the kids were able to make clothing out of regular, everyday items. And that's me in the middle, teaching the kids how to read medicine labels on livestock pharmaceuticals. And those are the kids dressed up in my show clothes. We were teaching them proper showroom attire, and I did not realize how much bigger I am than those kiddos. And to conclude, Hunt County 4-H is making waves. We are represented on a local, state, district, and national level. Last year, 57 4-H members showed in the Hunt County Fair with 103 projects. We had 27 members this year compete in the District Food Challenge, Horse Judging, and Photography. And we had 11 senior 4-H members compete at the Texas 4-H State Roundup. They competed in archery, horse judging, hippology, horse quiz bowl, and we had some representatives that kind of helped put on the event, some ambassadors. And then we had one senior member compete on Team Texas, representing at the National Shooting Sports Competition. In 2023, $61,500 in scholarships were earned by Hunt County 4-H members alone. $50,000 of that was Texas 4-H Foundation scholarships. We had three members earn those. And then one 4-H member actually earned $11,500 by herself. She was the high individual at the Houston Livestock Judging Contest and the San Antonio, not livestock. not livestock, sorry, horse judging contest, and won all that money by herself. And I think that is something to be proud of.
Wow.
Yeah, she's a freshman. This year, we have 33 exhibitors competing across the state at the Texas major shows. So that is Fort Worth, San Antonio, San Angelo, Austin, Houston. They're competing in archery, breeding heifers, commercial steers, horse judging, livestock judging, horse skillathon, Equine IQ, and calf scramble. So far, at the Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo, we have had the fourth-place high individual in the goat judging, and the second high team overall. And then, on the horse side of things, Equine IQ, we had the top 10 intermediate individual, and we've had the ninth-place high individual and the fifth-place high team overall. So our young people are out and about, and they are doing amazing things. Thank you.
Anybody got a question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all do a great job. We appreciate all y'all's efforts. Commissioners, entertaining motion for approval?
No move.
No move. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item four, there are risks established in Wolf City Action Center. Commissioners, I'm gonna table this till next meeting. Where Wolf City Action Center is an aid to the elderly, and they have them come in a couple times a week, and script brings food in for them, and then they have social events. It's shut down because of COVID, and they're now trying to open it back up and get going again. And we've got some things going on with the money we've donated to them, and we need a new agreement, and we haven't got it all figured out yet. We're still in conversation with Wolf City, and soon as we can get that established, certainly by hopefully next, next meeting, then we'll, we'll deal with it. So we'll table it for now. Action item five, a letter in regard to the Texas Department of Transportation, fiscal year 2024, assistance allotment for Hunt County. Entertaining motion for approval?
So move. In reference to this, you requested this in reference, have they advised, is that the second page of their advisory that it is available? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I so move.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Action item six, the reappointment of Jeanette Moser to the TERS Board to a new two-year term effective December 31, 2023, expiring December 31, 2024. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number seven, a full racial profiling report for the Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff, y'all getting any presentation or, okay. Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number eight, after public hearing and discussion, consider approval and execution of a lease for space on the Tillman Infrastructure LLC Communication Tower near the city of Caddo Mills for the installation and operation of public safety radio equipment, equipment that will be part of the new Hunt County P25 Public Safety Radio System. Daniel?
All right. I've got one copy of this. I know that this has been emailed to you. It's a very long document. Most of it is exhibits. This is for the P25 radio system. What you have in front of you is a site lease agreement with Tillman Infrastructure, which owns the tower that we're trying to lease space on. If you approve this, it'll be a 20-year initial term, with two five-year additional terms later. We don't know if we'll need that, because we don't know what technology is going to be for this type of system 20 years from now. If you approve it, the, we would start paying rent this summer on June 1st, or if we get equipment installed before then, then it moves that initial rent payment back. The rent is $900 a month for the first year, and has a 2% increase, which is a great term, definitely an appropriate thing for county government planning. 2% increase every year from that point forward that we continue to use the tower. We have additional financial obligations under this to also install and then pay for utility service, which is how this is normally done. This contract was negotiated in conjunction with our consultant for the radio tower. But the utility services, we would have to install those as part of the construction process. That would be separately metered, and the county would pay for its own electricity, which is likely the only utility that we'll need there. May also need internet at some point, but that will also be something that the county installs and then pays for, has an obligation to maintain. There's one difference, since this lease was sent to you, there's, we discovered one typo under the lease term. This is a 20-year lease, and it says that under term number four, but then it also has a reference to it ending on the day before the fifth anniversary of the commencement date. That would be changed to 20, and so, or the 20th anniversary. And so if you approve it, it would need to be, any motion to approve would need to be subject to that, changing that typo. In addition, you need to open a public hearing on this and allow for comments from the public before voting on the contract in general.
May I ask a question? I believe it's on the fifth, one, two, three, four, five. On the fifth, it's at number 17, assignment. It says tenants should not assign sublet or transfer this lease without the written consent of landlord, which may be withheld at its sole discretion. Then on the B, it says landlord shall have the right to assign and transfer this lease upon tenants receiving notice such as sale, transfer, assignment. Landlord shall be relieved of liabilities and obligations. Do they have any time in reference to advisors, to advise us in advance that this is taking place, or all of a sudden can they say, hey, we sell our relation to someone else? Do they have to give a time limit in reference to that?
Not if they're just going to sell the tower. They do have time limits, two different time limits that apply for ending the lease, for termination. One is 270 days, one's 180 days, depending on whether it's at the end of an existing term. But this section does not require them to give any advance notice if they sell the tower. But that's a, that's a really common thing. That's, that's not problematic for us. If they sell the tower, it's definitely going to have to come along with assigning the leases that they have on the tower, because anybody who buys that tower is going to buy it, add as an existing stream of income. That'll go into the price of the, the tower if they do come to the point of selling it. These kind of towers are bought and sold all the time.
Thank you.
Only thing it changes is where we mail the check to.
That's correct.
Yeah. Any other questions? No, I'll open up for public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak for or against this item, please come forward and state your name and address. Anything, anybody online, Daniel?
No, there's none.
Okay. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Action item number nine, after public hearing and discussion, consider approval and execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Upper Sabine Soil and Water Conservation District that terminates the current agreement and creates a new agreement for the term beginning January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2028. Daniel?
All right. This is the one-page agreement that is in your packets. This is a revision to an existing five-year MOU that we had with the Upper Sabine Soil and Water Conservation District. That's one of the groups that you hardly ever hear about, but is extremely important for future planning, for health, life, safety, and health issues related to the dams that they cover. They, there hadn't been a whole lot of movement or things being done by that group, at least not as much as they're doing in the upcoming few years. This is a five-year agreement that basically does away with the existing agreement, gives another five-year agreement that lays out our obligations and theirs to one another. Basically, our obligation, if you approve this, would be to pay them $20,000 for their O and M costs each year, once a year for the next five years. And then their obligations to the county are all laid out in section three of the agreement, but it comes down to furnishing things to the county related to planning and inspection of those existing dams in, mostly in the eastern half of the county.
Eastern, they got east and west now, both. Used to, it was just the northeast, but then, when the Lake Fork Soil Conservation Board quit, quit operating, they took over the lakes on the other side, and there's several in precinct two. I think you got three or four of them, don't you, Philip?
Yes, we have them, and I want to tell you something. They probably saved a lot of flooding in reference to the redone of that one off of the highway off of correction 1571. But it's a good thing. There's no doubt about that. Look, shake your head. It's a very good thing. Basically, this was done probably about 50 or more years ago, and all those lakes consist to the east of us, and if it wasn't for this, we'd have very much flooding, very much flooding.
Yeah, these lakes were all built back in the 50s and 60s, and they all had like 50 and 60-year lives, and here we sit, 70 years into it. They were, the one Phillips referring to was actually on Judge Horn's property that he acquired, and that one was of urgent needs, and they got a $2 million grant to totally redo that one, because it would have got, if it, the breach in the dam was becoming pretty evident that it was going to happen, and it would have wiped out probably two or three trailer houses in a county road if it broke.
And a farm-to-market road.
And maybe part of the farm-to-market road. It's, these are very important. Commissioners, we raised the budget already in the budget season. I'd already been having conversations with them. We've been giving them, under our agreement, $10,000 a year, and I budgeted 20 this year, and this agreement calls for us to give them $20,000. There's a lot of grant opportunities coming up over the next few years. We're under, you know, we have a grant with the Texas Water Development Board that's trying to do a statewide flood plane management plan, and we're already participating in it. Others are doing the same thing with these lakes, and the, they can get, the soil conservation can get grants, but nearly all of them are matching funds, or not matching, but some participation in funds. And usually, I think it's like 10%. Mark, do you know, have you heard? I think it's 10. I think it's 10%. They have to match, and like I said, this other one was $2 million when they did the one lake. And, you know, I think it's just very important that we keep supporting this, and because they're gonna, they're gonna continue to have problems with these lakes, and they have over, the one right above the lake they just did is also critical. And it is said, if that dam breaks, it will wipe out a farm-to-market road and several houses. So these things need to get done. So, Daniel, ready for a public hearing on this?
Um, yes.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up to public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak for or against this, please come forward. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments, commissioners? Entertaining motion for approval?
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 10, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in the right-of-way of County Road 2414 in Precinct 2 under normal stipulations.
Make a motion. We approve this construction under normal stipulation?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number number 11, the request to construct electrical power distribution facilities, which will be in County, right-of-way of County Road 4120 in Precinct 4 under normal stipulations.
Make a motion to approve under normal stipulations?
Second.
Got a motion in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action number 12, the request for permission to do work within the right-of-way, County right-of-way along County Road 1033 west of the intersection of County Road 1032 and County Road 1033. We're looking to install single-phase overhead distribution line approximately five foot inside the south right-of-way of County Road 1033. Site location map and permit exhibit are enclosed. The permit exhibit details to propose work in Precinct 1 under normal stipulations.
Judge, make a motion. We approve this under the usual stipulations, and the additional stipulation that they come back, the Encore comes back and properly removes some stumps that have been cut improperly. I make a motion to approve it under those stipulations.
Motion fails for lack of a second. Action item 13, the request for permission for Tech Serve Engineering and Consulting, LTD, on behalf of Encore Electric Delivery LLC, to do work within the county right-of-way along County Road 3505 at the intersection of State Highway 34. We're looking to construct electrical power distribution facilities. These facilities are substation feeder exit lines that will help supply power within Hunt County Precinct 3 under normal stipulations.
Your Honor, I'd like to have a comment in reference to this. This is a major thing for electricity as far as having its availability. But I also would like to say that it's within the right-of-way, according to the right-of-way as far as utilities, in actuality, this can, commissioners, court can't prevent them from that, because they have utilities also already there. I do, on the other hand, do promote this for the simple reason it's very much needed. I would like to make motion, we allow this construction under normal stipulations.
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14, the request for permission for One Global Telecom to install telecommunication facilities on behalf of Charter Communications utilizing existing conduit from the northwest corner of intersection of County Road 428 and 4209, running east along the north side of County Road 4209, as shown in attached plans in Precinct 4 under normal stipulations.
Make a motion to approve under normal stipulations?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 15, a variance request for road surface, private road 2425 for a proposed subdivision plat in Precinct 2.
I'm Micah Pryor, I'm a real estate agent locally. Jamie Wall is my client. We're about to, we were going to work on a subdivision plat, and it came to our attention, the commissioners, that the subdivision regulations might, there was some question about requiring some road improvements. This is a, I submitted documents last, last week. Mr. Wall owns two lots. They're adjacent. He wants to divide the larger lot, which is 14, into four lots. He'll retain the 10 acres and the second lot. All the lots would have the required road frontage. We have a private road maintenance agreement that is recorded with the county. All the neighbors already maintain this road. It is a rock road with crushed asphalt. It was indicated that there might be a question of whether the road or a portion of the road would have to be paved to add more meters. We do have a will-serv letter from Poetry Water for up to four meters. So, and I want to point out that 2425 is a through road. It connects with County Road 2432 on the north, County Road 2434 on the south. There is a gate currently locked at the north end on 2432 because of the cut-through traffic by the neighbors, but we understand that 911 and emergency personnel have a padlock on that lock to get through if there, if they needed to get down that road. They would not have to turn around. So we're asking for a variance to proceed with putting together a subdivision plat for four lots.
Good. Thank you. Brian, you, you got any questions? Brian, you want to come brief us?
In the, in the Hunt County subdivision regulations and the engineering standards manual, section 502 of the subdivision regulations covers all the roadway standards. Section 502A1 states that the developer is responsible for Section 502A1 states that the developer is responsible for the cost of right-of-way and roadway improvements that are required in Section 74 of the engineering standards. In order to develop in Hunt County, the existing road, private or, or public, must be upgraded to the county standard. That is a paved surface. Of course, a lot of times, whenever you're dealing with these existing roads, you can't necessarily get a full 28-foot wide surface, which is what we require, but it does require that the surface be upgraded to a county-approved surface, which would be a hard surface, not a gravel or, or rock surface. So this road being rock, when, when Ms. Pryor contacted me, I provided her the subdivision regulations and explained to her that, that they would be responsible for the upgrade of this gravel road up to county spec. Of course, as, as you all know, but folks in the audience may not, that requirement is there because whenever you are increasing traffic and stress on the existing infrastructure of the county, it's not the, the rest of the county, it's not the rest of the taxpayers' responsibility to have to upgrade that road. It is the developer's responsibility to upgrade that road. They stand to financial gain from it, therefore, the county requires them to upgrade the road. They requested the variance, so here they are, are requesting that variance. Now, this is a private road. They do have a road maintenance agreement in place, which is a novel concept anymore. So many of these private roads don't have road maintenance agreements, and they are maintenance nightmares for the people, and they're access nightmares for public health and safety matters such as the sheriff, ambulance, fire, anybody else, so.
Is this one a nightmare now?
This, this road, I think they, they, they keep a pretty decent maintenance on it. It's, it's not like some that are, that are down in your precinct, some of those private roads down there. It is significantly better than that. There are eight or 10 existing lots on the, on the road currently, so.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Come to the mic, please, so it can be on record.
A question that I, thank you for briefing, explaining it a little better to me as well. One question that I had is if there are some requirements, would it be the entire road, which is about a half a mile road, or would it be in front of these lots? Would it, and when you say a hard surface, is that crushed asphalt, which is what we have now, crushed, is it, is it asphalt? Is it concrete? What, that would, that would be a question that Mr. Wall had.
Sure. The, the requirement is for the, the road abutting the proposed subdivision, so it would not be the entire road, it would only be the section of road that is adjacent to these lots to be created. Hard surface in the subdivision regulations is concrete, chip seal, asphalt, or in some circumstances, oil sand, which is the, the surface of, of choice for most of our existing county roads, obviously with, with maintenance issues and such, so.
How many feet of road are we talking about?
I don't know exactly. I haven't run it. 1,200 feet, thousand feet.
No, 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 just in front of the property.
It's about 1,000 feet or so. It's 1,000, 1,200 feet.
Was this platted? Was this area platted, or is this all meets and bounds?
No, sir, it's all meets and bounds tracks.
Okay.
Was it an illegal subdivision that's not planted? Is that what it is?
No, no, this is an old subdivision down there in the, in the southwest corner of the county. It's been, it, most of the tracks down there are a little bit larger, but they've been in existence for a very long time, down there.
Commissioners, got any comments?
I feel like we need to follow the subdivision rules, so I'd make the motion that we deny the variance.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 16, with a recommendation from the Lake Tewocany Zone and Commission, a commercial development permit for a non-conforming use convenience store in a single-family 20 residential district to be located at County Road 9910, County Road 3622, Coimbatore, Texas, 75474, Precinct 3. Brian?
Okay, this is the old grocery store, convenience store, that was formerly known as Finstads or Black Bear Crossing. It's, the property is under a new ownership, and we have a gentleman who's looking at reopening the store. The store closed for remodeling. It's an older building, been there since the creation of the lake back in the 60s. So they've, you, you've got this existing building that was very obviously commercial, and it was built for commercial. It is in an SF20 zone, but, but it is right on a major road, services about five pretty good-sized subdivisions down there. The question was asked, you know, should we just rezone? And then you get into an issue where you have spot zoning. When you get into spot zoning, you might as well not have any zoning at all. That's why we figured that going with a non-conforming use would be a little bit better. It was previously a non-conforming use, and it would just continue on. Now, according to the zoning ordinance, if the business has been closed for longer than six months, then it can't be reopened. Well, this business has been closed for about a year, but the building has been under remodeling, constant remodeling and updating accordingly. So the zoning commission down at the lake, at their last meeting, agreed that it was a, this non-conforming use would be very justified. Vacant commercial buildings down there that service that large of an area, just, just not real good, and it, and it does service a large area, the easy-living area down there. Keeps, keeps people from having to travel several miles to, to get to any kind of a convenience store. They're going to have a little sandwich shop. It's surrounded by an RV park that's been there for, since the creation of the lake, so the, the use of this building as a commercial building is a, it, it has a lot of merit, very, very viable use to, for, for commercial.
Are we still under the old subdivision, old zoning rules?
Yes, sir.
We still hadn't approved the new ones?
No, we've got some.
Did you look to see if, if it had been any different in the new ones? How we would handle it, or to be handled the same way?
I did not look at the new, at the new rules, since we don't have them in place yet. I just looked at the old zoning ordinance. I believe the, the non-conforming use issue is going to be very similar in the new rules.
It's pretty standard.
Pretty standard, yeah.
Your Honor, in reference to this, this, like I said, he said, this has been there so long that it's basically historical, Finstads. The, the closest store is probably, what, two miles, three miles down the road, and you have a population very, very dense in actuality. We have the approval, basically, the Tewocany Planning Zone has approved the application in reference to non-conforming. Okay, that's under the old rules. The thing about it is, I have no problem, basically, it's going, it's going to be, is a plus in reference to letting them continue and possibly use this as commercial, as non-conforming. All the residents are behind it and to the side of it. In fact, there's a storage shed that's already commercial all the way over to the other county road. So this is the whole deal. This is nothing but do good for the, the whole area, to be quite honest with you. I myself, I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission down at Lake Tewocany and allow this to take place.
Any seconds?
Second.
Any comments from anybody? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Action item 17, replata lots 11 and 12 of West Orchard Acres in Precinct 1. Brian?
Uh, this is just outside of town off of 380. This is in that, that area that was subdivided years ago. I believe it was part of that possibly Greenville Investment Tracks area.
Yeah.
These are.
Close to 36.
Uh, north of 380, just outside of the, of, of the city limits.
Okay. I thought it went all the way up to 36 and 380.
Man, that, those, those little tracks go all over the place back then.
Yeah.
This gentleman's looking at that, he's, he's wanting to reconfigure so that it's just a little bit more conducive to, to what he's wanting to do as far as, as developing the track and, and using it.
He's just changing the lot lines.
Just changing the lot lines.
He's not adding anything to it or anything, he's just changing lot lines.
That's correct.
Okay.
But we will need a public hearing since it's a replat.
Yes, gotcha. All right, at this time, I'll open it up to a public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak about this item, please come forward. Anyone for or against it? Being none, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Judge, make a motion, we approve this replat? Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number 18, the replata lots 7 in Chinchilla Ranch in Precinct 1.
Okay, this is a, another one, this is right on the corner of County Road and FM 1569 in the old Chinchilla Ranch subdivision. It was one large lot. He's, he actually wanted three lots at first, but due to the existing water mains that are there, he didn't have enough room, enough usable space to get three septic systems, three one-acre lots on it, so he's, he's splitting in half. We've been going back and forth about this for some time, and they've, we've, we've finally got the, the final done, and they've got it worked out to where they get two instead of three.
So is this fronting on the county road or, or on the farm road?
It's on the corner.
It's on the corner.
Yes, sir.
But lots face?
The lots will face the county road, 1,006.
Is there any upgrades needed on that county road?
It's, it previously had a, a right-of-way dedication already, so we've got the right-of-way dedication. Road's hard surface, it's right up there on that white rock shale base, there's not much dirt. It's, it's probably one of the hardest-stinking roads in Hunt County.
But it is, it is all sand?
Shovel.
Yes, it's already upgraded.
It's already, it's already hard surface, yes, sir.
All right. Entertaining motion for approval?
Need a public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Did the other one, I forgot this one. At this time, I'll open up this item to a public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Me and none, I'll close the public hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Action item 19, the final plant of J Row Edition in Precinct 1.
All right, two-lot subdivision on 1562, out there west of Celeste. Pretty simple, pretty straightforward subdivision, two, two lots.
They got their driveway permits already?
They already have houses actually on both lots, and they've, they've got a shared driveway.
Okay.
So they.
They've already done all that.
Already got it.
Okay. Any questions? Entertaining motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, sir. Anything else, Daniel, anything before we go to executive session?
Judge, the, the 4-H crew do want a, a picture of all of us. That's what they've been waiting around.
Oh, well, we could've done that earlier. All right, entertaining motion to go into executive session under items one through four.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion carries for an executive session at 11:04.
Want a picture in here or out here?
I don't know. They want a picture of the food or?
I don't know.
Yes, why don't you run out there and ask them right quick for us? Okay, that's fine, whichever way they want to do it.
If this one you want to be the heart of evil, I.
But it vibrates up here because I'm got it on, so I can watch the thing. It vibrates up here.
And then everybody's looking around. That's why.
Oh, they're coming in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, ready, babe?
Oh, man.
Welcome on over here.
We all appreciate it.
Absolutely. No, we had two young men that wanted to share their project, and we had some kids that wanted to speak.
That's okay. Why don't you come on this side?
Houston, you get in there, or you can get in there, too.
Y'all ready?
Look at me, honey.
Back that end.
Mr. Stewart, back that there.
All right, y'all look good.
We tend to be long-term.
No, it's business.
Thank y'all for coming.
Oh, there it went, there it went.
We will, our office staff will pre-press that on the table.[1669.13]
What? His house is-
That's five years, uh, the hamburger place.
It's still loud.
It needs to be, does?
Yeah.
It needs to be pretty open. I mean, it's fantastic. So is it a lot piece?
Yes.
No.
Why is it Wilson flag? Why did he choose that?
Oh.
Yeah.
I do not show that we're up.
I'm not showing that we are.
Now we are.
All right. It's 12:36, we're back in regular session. Is there anything else to come for the court today? Being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a motion second, all in favor say aye. All opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned at 12:36. Thank y'all.